Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this public hearing of the St. Tammany Parish Public School Board, Thursday, August 20th, to discuss the 2020-2021 budget. And we'll begin by asking Mrs. Coakley to call the role.
Mr. Green, Mrs. Heinz, Mr. Durman, Mr. Loop, Mr. Harold, Mr. Nation, Mrs. Richardson, Mr. Winkler, Mrs. Drucker, Mr. Bittencourt, Mrs. Lamie, Mr. Hersey, Mr. Bro, Mr. Kuzan, Mrs. Page.
All right, if everyone will please stand and join me as I offer the invocation and we pledge allegiance to our nation's flag. Let us pray. Direct us, O Lord, with your most gracious favor that all our work, begun, continued, and ended in you, may find favor in your sight. And finally, by your mercy, may we obtain everlasting life through Christ our Lord. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we are pleased to present our budgets for fiscal year 2020-2021. Our budgets are reviewed each year by our external auditors, Laporte CPA and business advisors, during the course of our annual financial statement audit. During this audit, the budgets for the school board are reviewed for content presentation -- excuse me, for content presentation and for compliance with all requirements of the Louisiana Local Government Budget Act. The Local Government Budget Act, founded in Louisiana by revised statutes 39:1301 through 1315, directs political subdivisions of this state as to the manner in which the budgets of those political subdivisions shall be adopted, implemented, and amended. The school board strives to be transparent, and this detailed budget is presented to reflect this. The school board has received no audit findings related to the budget. The school board is also required to submit its budgets annually to the Louisiana Department of Education for approval. The school board has received no findings on the budget from the Louisiana Department of Education. If you have any questions, Mr. Jabia, our superintendent to my left, or Mrs. Prevost, our business affairs supervisor, I'll get it out in a second, Terry, are here to respond to any questions that you may have. And now I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Jabia.
Thank you, Mr. Nation, members of the board. Tonight, as you know, is the public hearing on the budget. It's a time for members of the public to ask questions and make comments. Tonight, I think it's also important to remember that our budget is a year-round process, and it's a day-to-day budget that we're constantly reviewing, monitoring, and discussing, both as staff as well and from the public. The board's opportunity for discussion on the proposed budget will take place at the September 3 Committee-as-a-Whole meeting, and then final board adoption is scheduled for September 10. Before we open for public comments, please allow me to share some of the highlights from this year's proposed budget. General fund revenue. We are projecting an increase in Advilorm, which is our property tax collection, of 4.9 million, based on the latest tax roll provided by the Assessors Office. The tax roll indicates increases in the number of properties and the overall value of all properties. We continue to have increases in sales tax revenue throughout last fiscal year. However, due to uncertainty related to the COVID-19 pandemic, we have projected sales tax at the same amount as last year. We will continue to monitor the sales taxes on a monthly basis and revise the budget if necessary. MFP funds are expected to decrease by $91,000 from last year's allocation. The decrease in MFP relates to increases in the amounts paid to non-public schools. We did not budget any increases for student growth due to uncertainty with the COVID-19 pandemic. Our general fund expenditures. Salaries are projected to increase by $2 million in fiscal year 2021. For fiscal year 1920, substitute costs were reduced by $1.1 million as a result of the shutdown of schools due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The remaining increases relates to reclassifications and new positions added. A decrease of approximately $520,000 in retirement contributions is projected due to a decrease in employer contribution rates for the school employees' retirement system and teachers' retirement system. The school supplemental budget reflects an increase of $660,000. Schools were given an increase of $506,000 for school supply fees. As you may recall, going back to when we discussed this in the spring, schools were charging, depending on grade level, $10, $12, and $20, I believe, per student. We have elected to put that amount into their instructional budget so schools will not be collecting supply fees. So I think this is a great addition for our parents, and we wanted the public to know this. So the schools will no longer request and receive these funds from parents, as they will be paid by general fund. The school supply fees, and I just mentioned, $10 for elementary, $12 for junior, and $20 for high schools. The remaining increase of $154,000 was attributable to an increase in enrollment at the schools for fiscal year 2020, and no schools overspent their supplemental budgets for fiscal year 2020. Overspending of a supplemental budget in a fiscal year results in a decrease in school supplemental budget in the following year, and we had none of that to happen. Increase in equipment and debt service of approximately $600,000 for the lease purchase payments of 20 new school buses and various large equipment purchases, including 21 maintenance vehicles. As I mentioned at the beginning, our budget is extremely fluid and constantly monitored. Budget updates as required will be provided to the board in December and March. A special thank you to Terry and her staff for the great work in preparing the budget. We look forward to any public comments tonight, as well as the board discussion on September the 3rd. Mr. Nation, thank you, and I would like to offer Ms. Prevost to any members of the public or to members of the board, if you have something that you would like to discuss with her after tonight's meeting that you have a question about, Terry would be available to talk to you about that, either by phone, or we'll be very cautious about social distancing. She can meet you in person.
Thank you, Mr. Jabia. Okay, at this time, we now move to public input concerning the proposed budgets for fiscal year 2020 and 2021. And as Mr. Jabia said, just to remind, this is the opportunity for the public to speak, to ask any questions you may have, and then Mr. Jabia or Ms. Prevost is here to answer those and for us to listen. I do have the sign-up sheet here, and Mrs. Coakley, there's also a signing sheet on the podium. So if you would, if you've not signed in, the signing is strictly for -- so Ms. Coakley can have your names for the minutes and record those properly. So at this time, I'd like to -- and let me just say this, so there's no misunderstanding. You don't have to have signed up prior, you know, just to speak. We just want you to sign in, just so we can have your name for the minutes, if that makes sense. Okay, so we're going to start with Gwen Brady.
First, Gwen, come on.
And Rusty Yates, I assume -- or Mr. Yates?
She goes to go talk, she.
Okay.
She usually does.
Welcome, and state your name and place of residence for the record. City is what I mean, not your address.
Okay, I am Gwen Brady. I live in Slidell. I am a bus owner-operator for St. Tammany Parish.
Okay, welcome.
And this is?
I'm Russell Yates, or Rusty, everybody knows me by Rusty. I live in Palm River, and I'm also a bus owner-operator in St. Tammany Parish.
Great, welcome, Mr. Yates and Mrs. Brady.
Thank you. And by the way, we're both former board members of the local union, both Rusty and I. We're here as bus owner-operators and only for one-time stipend of $1,500 for each bus owner-operator. The reason -- I sent an email to all of you, and I brought a hard copy for you tonight, setting forth why we're asking for the stipend. Until you own one of these things, until you buy one and maintain one, it's really hard to understand what all goes into them. But as a result of the COVID-19 shutdown, we lost our local operational pay. We're still getting our normal -- our salary, we're still getting our $100 a month stipend, and our standard state operational pay. For nine pay periods, we were docked our local operational pay. It's hurt a lot of bus drivers because they're stretching this money now to make bus notes, some of them with extra insurance. And we also lost our summer school runs. We lost out on our midday runs for the remainder of the year. And we lost out on field trips, a lot of people. So all of this has put a burden on a lot of bus drivers. The buses take a beating, and they still need maintenance. So a lot of people have come up short making their repairs for the summer, and we're just asking for this stipend to kind of put some money in the pockets of the drivers to keep the buses in safe operating condition. You want to add something?
We also admit that we never -- we didn't purchase fuel the whole time. We didn't drive our buses, they sat. We understand that. But there's also more to come than fuel. This money, even though it's the way y'all have it listed as fuel supplement, it's not just fuel supplement. No bus driver burns that much fuel, and it was also to help with the operational pay. And that's why we're looking for the stipend, is because we still, like Gwen said, the buses is still -- you still have to pay notes. You still have to put tires on the bus. You still have to maintain the bus, even though it's just sitting there. The tires -- a tire now is $400. It's not like it was when I first started, I could get a tire for $100. Now they're $400. So we -- and I just want to -- I appreciate y'all listening to us.
Yes. And the fact that the state operational, and I'm sure most of you know that already, the formula hasn't changed in 34 years for the state operational pay. So we have been rounding around trying to do something about that, but it looks like it's just going nowhere with, you know, because that's law, and we realize that, you know, that could be years before they ever change that if they do. So that's why we're leaning to the local.
And Mr. Jabia can attest, we've been to him, I don't know how many times, and, you know, we came and talked to him about it. We just -- we need help. Not just us, all the bus drivers need help. And y'all own buses now, so you know where the money's going.
Yeah. And it's extremely -- it's hurting the people that have the bus notes the worst. Some of us have our buses paid for already. It's not hurting us quite as much, but as buses get older, then they require more repair too. So I mean, it's kind of, you know, it levels out. If you have a new bus, you don't have as much repair, but you got the note. Got an older bus, you have more repairs. But we're just asking for your consideration and your help and your understanding.
And I think Ms. Provost or Mr. Bodie, either one, they've received numerous calls.
Yeah.
Because we had a meeting with them before we met, before we came, and they can attest that, you know, the bus drivers are hurting. We need help. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Mr. Jabia, I think?
Yeah, just for the board's clarification, this is not in support or against. I just want to clarify, so I'm not sure the board understands the different type of -- this was really a local fuel adjustment that was done right after Katrina, when the prices of gasoline and diesel skyrocketed, and so the board agreed to supplement the price of fuel at that time. The superintendent at that time also gave an additional $100 per month, actually for 12 months, which is $1,200, plus the operational pay is based on that chart from the state that's based on your mileage and the size of your bus and all of that, okay? And I wanted to tell y'all that, and I don't know if the board knows this, but for anything like this, we need to go through the collective bargaining process, and I've already talked to Ms. Green. We're about to go through that as soon as we can get the budget done and see what we have, and that's on our agenda to discuss, okay?
Excuse me, we're not asking for -- we know it's coming up for collective bargaining. We wanted something now to help, because you've got schools starting in a week, two weeks, three weeks? Two and a half, two weeks? And you've got bus drivers that's going to -- that needs tires.
But technically, Mr. Yates, the board cannot do this because we're under the federation that has to go through that process.
Okay.
And I'm not saying we can't tackle that sooner before we do everything else, but I'm saying we're going to need to do that step first. Because the board does not have the right to -- that's the reason we -- well, not the reason we went to collective bargaining, but one of the things through the collective bargaining process is we bargain for salary and benefits, and then we bring that to the board for them to approve. But it has to go through that bargaining process first before we can bring it to the board.
Even a one-time stipend?
Because that's salary. That's money.
Well, we're asking for an operational stipend, not a salary.
Still the same. It's money. It's money. I'm not trying to put a damper on what you're doing here. I'm just telling you that's what the process is. And I promise you, we're going to cover it. I'll get with Ms. Green as soon as possible to look at this, and then we can come back to the board, and they can vote on it. Okay?
Okay.
We hadn't forgot about you. We appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brady, Mrs. Brady and Mr. Yates. Next on my list up here is Mr. Robert Brune. Welcome, Mr. Brune.
Thank you. My name is Robert Brune from Slidell, and I appreciate this opportunity to go over the budget. And as always, it's a fascinating document with a lot of details, and as I have in the past, I have several questions. But I'd like to start off by kind of an introductory statement. I was surprised when I was going through the budget by how little impact the COVID emergency has had on this budget. And I would like to, if they would like to, I would like the administration to comment on how the budgetary impact of the COVID emergency is going to be handled.
I'll give you some generals. I'll let Terry give the specifics, but I think your statement I'm going to take as a positive.
It is a positive.
Because we were able to do the things that we're doing and not affecting the general fund, which is taxpayer monies in that. So Terry, you want to talk a little bit about what we received from the federal government as far as through the CARES Act? And that's how we're able to do what we're able to do without affecting the general fund.
Thank you.
Yes, we've received what we have on the table, where we can apply for it and get reimbursed for around $7.6 million through the CARES Act. Also, there's a FEMA disaster declaration. They are covering 75% of all the protective devices, whether it be masks, thermometers, all those different types of items are being covered 75%. And then we're able to do the other 25% in that CARES Act money, and we're able to budget out through probably half the year with that. And Amy could speak more to that, how far we -- I'd say we budget out at least eight months of prep with that CARES Act money, so we don't expect it to have any impact on the general fund in this fiscal year.
Excellent. That's great news. Okay, I would like to go through some line items, just questions. I have talked to Terry about this earlier, and she took care of a lot of the nitpicky stuff, so I'll try to keep it general. One thing that I want, one of the first things that I'd like to ask is the, under the revenue for local services, I was confused by the mills that are listed in the budget. I assume these are for 2020. When I checked with the assessor and looked at the assessor's mills, there's some slight differences, but I would like to get, these mills that you've listed in the budget, are they the official mills that we can count on, or what's the story on those, how much the mills are going to be?
Yes, this budget's based on the 2020 tax roll that hasn't been released yet. You can look at your estimated property tax bill online. It should reflect the 62 mills for the school board. Those bills will go out in November. They'll finalize the tax roll around that time. But we are blessed that the assessor has kept us informed. I get an updated tax roll probably every two, three weeks, and they're getting very close to the end, because now it's, I haven't gotten one in a while. So this is based on the last projected tax roll I received with the 62 mills I'm reflecting for the school board as of July 31st.
Great, okay. Thank you. And I did want to make a comment, that in the budget, you have the percent change FY 2020 versus FY 2021. As I understand it, these changes are the year-end actual versus the 2021 budget. And I wanted to thank you, that this is a very helpful way of presenting the information, much more useful than comparing budget to budget, since, as Mr. Jabia said, the budgets do change. So thank you again for that column. It's helpful in understanding the budget. My next question is, under the expenditures by object, the fees for Medicaid services, I've noticed these jump around like by millions of dollars every year, and I don't really understand that. Could you explain, or is this the state monkeying with our money, or what? What's going on there?
Yes, sir. I was lucky to serve on the Medicaid task force with the state. I was one of the school district representatives that was appointed on it, and that was a complaint I had, I continue to have with the state. We receive -- our biggest part of our Medicaid money comes from reimbursements of the salaries for the employees that are working with kids that are eligible for Medicaid. So we file these cost reports, and sometimes it's two years before we collect the money. Sometimes it's one year. It seems to skip a year because every one of the reports is opted by a firm that the state has hired, so it's slow with them. They may take a year, and then the state has a delay. I've complained and complained, but it's, I'm kind of at their mercy on that, so.
So this is?
So I didn't get a lot of the money. I haven't received any cost report reimbursements for fiscal '19, and I owed one for '18 on transportation, so we're waiting on those monies. That'll be about $3 million when it comes.
So that's just delays at the state level, then?
Yes, sir.
But given that we've submitted good paperwork, we do expect eventually to get these amounts. Okay, so, good. Yeah, one thing that I guess, maybe it's a nitpick, but I'll ask it anyway. When we're reading the budget, the number of employees that you list, I have a couple of questions about that, but in the budget, we, you know, like I'm looking on the first page, expenditures by instruction, the number of employees, is that the number of actual employees? Let's look at the 2018-19 actual, and then the 2019-20 budget and number of -- I don't understand, where do the numbers of employees refer to? Which budget year?
All right. The 18-19 employees aren't on this document. The employee numbers in the third column relate to the 1920 original budget.
Okay.
And then the employee numbers for the original budget are going to be pretty close to the employees from the ending actual of 1920. So our employee counts are constantly moving. It's very difficult to get numbers. So this is our, at the point in time when I did the budget, that's where the employees that we projected at that point.
Okay. I'll probably have to get together with you afterwards to talk about that, because, as you say, it jumps around so much, and it is a critical part of our budget to know how many people are working on what. All right. The next question I've got refers to expenditures, and I'm particularly going to ask about textbooks. This was a sensitive subject. It's always a sensitive subject among the public. And I wanted to find out what caused the changes between the 1920 budget and the 1920 actual. And given that this is a stable budget, it looks to me like it's a pretty stable budget for textbooks, but can we count on that they, all the schools will have all the textbooks that they need? I mean, it's, are we funding, are we ever going to run into funding restrictions on the textbooks, or is this budget adequate for all our requirements?
Do you want to add something?
We budget every year for textbooks.
Yeah, it's a whole budget. It's usually $4 million, that's the budget, and a lot of times, it depends if we're adopting a new textbook, that it's going to be more, but that budget stays the same, because, I mean, we're constantly buying books. So, and I think a lot of it, there was a decline because of the time period when we were closed. A lot of times, they're doing replacement books and things then, and it just didn't happen. So some of it probably ended up, is going to end up this year. That was, that would have happened during that time.
Okay. I just, perhaps the superintendent can respond. We're not going to allow funding restrictions to impact the textbooks in our schools.
Never have, no, sir.
Never have.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to hear that, because that's important to a lot of people.
Yes, sir.
The next question I've got is under other, the salaries virtual academy coordinator. Could someone explain what the virtual academy is, and does this relate to the online school?
Ms. Lemain will address that. Those are two different things, but she'll address it.
The virtual academy is a program, and we run, you know, some of our credit recovery through that, our alternative program. So it's a program, and those students are actually based at their home-based schools. The virtual school is separate and apart from that, because it's actually a school now, so.
So the virtual school is not going to appear as a separate line item in the budget, because it's a school, and it appears along with all the others' school expenses? Is that correct?
Right. But because of, right, but because of COVID this year, some of those expenses are being run through that budget, because the numbers are much greater than what we would anticipate on any traditional year.
Great, okay. And the salary for the new principal, I believe that's for the online school?
The virtual school principal actually is the existing principal for the RISE program. We part, you know, we're using that person in a dual role.
Okay, but we're budgeting for one additional principal here.
So that would be something different.
I assumed, I thought that was going to be the online principal, but apparently not. I assumed, I thought that was going to be the online principal, but apparently not. What is, what is the new principal for?
I think that we had, the RISE is a program, so that was a program administrator. We took that program administrator and made her principal, and now she will be over RISE and the virtual school, so that's probably why I showed one additional principal, but it's basically eliminating a program coordinator and replacing it with the principal.
That's correct.
Great, okay. Thank you. Now, I guess I'd like to go on to the special revenue funds. First thing I'd like to comment on is on the food services fund, just at some point in the future, perhaps the board or the administration could give a presentation, or it seems to me that there's going to be some big changes in, you know, how the food services are running this year, because the kids are going to be eating in the classrooms, or, you know, how are they going to pay for it? They don't pay on, are they going to pay online, or, anyway, I'd just be curious to know if there are any expected changes in the food services programs. We're budgeting a standard amount, the same amount for collections, I don't know whether we'll be collecting as much.
Price of meals are not changing.
Price, sure.
They're going to pay the way they've paid in the past, it's open to online, but I'm sure they can pay directly. Yes, the actual school food service in the, each school could differ, because of the group size that we're able to have under Phase 2 by the governor, so we're limited to 25, which is 24 students and an adult, so we cannot put a big group in a cafeteria. We've installed some partitions in some of our cafeterias, so that we can put more than one group, but probably in reality, there are going to be some kids that are going to be eating in the classroom, there's going to be some other kids that may be eating in designated areas that principals have established with picnic tables, et cetera. We're probably going to have them every place we can put them, it's going to look completely different. But yeah, but every school is going to have, every student's going to have the opportunity for their meal, and even in the hybrid model, when a group of students alternate, and one day they're in school, and the next day they're at home, while they're at home, we're going to have the grab and go meals, so they'll be able to drive through and get their meal. Kids from the virtual school, they will also have the opportunity to pick up a grab and go meal. So all the kids will be still offered the same lunches and our breakfasts that we offer now, but where they eat the meal is going, could look different in every school.
So it's going to change by schools then?
Yes, sir. Just depending on the facility and what they have available.
So at the budgetary level, that's far too.
The budgetary should be the same.
Got it, okay. I did want to mention, under the school security fund, looks to me like that 8 million, 8.3 million, it looks to me like that's going to be the annual cost for the program going forward, and I wanted to compliment the board again on implementing this program. To me, the $8 million is well worth it. The taxpayers supported it, and I think this special fund to track the expenses is an excellent method of showing the public how the money's being spent. The school activity fund, I guess I still don't understand that. What is the source of the school activity revenues? And is this just an accounting process, or is there money coming, how's that work?
Okay, the school activity funds, it's on, can you hear me? It's just not close enough, I'm sorry. The school activity funds is the 55 schools, we have 56 now. All the school activities for that school, the revenues from their various sources, yearbooks, class activities, all the things, they have to track all those in separate activities, so you have a revenue and expense for each type of activity a school does, that's required by state law. Before, those activities were outside of our budget, so the school, the principal was responsible for the funds, but as of this fiscal year, there's a new governmental accounting standard where we have to incorporate that. We've received no guidance from the state of Louisiana or the Department of Ed on how we should handle it, other than, they told me it did need to be budgeted, but since we budget all revenue funds, I did a very preliminary budget, just a whole budget, basically, until we could get more guidance. So that's what you see here, it just shows total revenues, it's not broken down over the sources, and total expenditures, just to have a budget in place, and it can be amended at a later date to show more detail, which is my plan.
Great, thank you very much for the explanation. With Teri's help, I think I had all my questions answered, and Mr. Jabia, I appreciate your comments as well, and congratulations to the board on a budget that looks like it's going to meet our needs, and it's a well-explained document, at least at the level of a full budget, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Broom, appreciate your comment. Thank you, Mr. Broom. All right, is there anyone else that would like to have, put any input, make any input regarding the proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year? All right, not seeing anyone, then, Mr. Jabia, do you have anything else before we give you the last word?
No, sir.
All right.
Thank you all for coming.
With no further business to come before this public hearing, I declare the hearing adjourned.